Yeah. We're going to call the meeting to order. Let's rise for the plan, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which has stands one is indivisible and just as we are.
All right. First up. I bet we have Steve. Would you like to go first?
No, let's have Mr. Hayden Boffin go first.
He's number one.
All right, you have your update sheet before you and couple changes since the last time that you've seen this. They have started again on the outside of the courthouse and right now they are installing windows that was part of the bid project. These are windows that cover up the original stained glass windows of the courthouse. And so these are the half mooned windows that you see about up on the third story of the courthouse. And so they've mobilized to do that and they are underway in place. Then we have, we are going to schedule a reconstruction meeting for installation of the generator. We've also received all the specification sheets that have been approved by our engineer. So hopefully by the time I report this to you next time, we'll have a schedule of installation.
Do you have the generator yet?
That's a question I'm still waiting on.
Okay.
It's funny you ask that question because I have put actually our engineer who we have hired, not the contractor installing it. They're going to reach out to the vendor that's supplying the generator to get information directly from them.
Thank you.
And then the department, the Health Department on that material is still one to three weeks out for delivery. This is a new one, the next one on item number 12. Motor registration is required and installation of a security camera. This will actually be hooked into our security system for recording purposes because they have to now have a camera that watches where they count the ballots. And so this takes a new camera installation and that would be estimated cost. We've had to reconfigure a little bit up in the clerk's office. We moved their mail storing area in their mailbox to another location. This has to be a specifically enclosed area for where they count the ballots. And so that camera is on order and it's supposed to be in actually next week, third week in March to have it installed. So it'll be here in time for when they start counting ballots. Also number 13 is a new one. This is a, this is on the current generator system. You may or may not know, but we test this generator weekly and at our last test a couple weeks ago, the test failed. The, the switch to switch from commercial power which is generator power did not operate. We called in obviously several folks to look at this. The generator itself is putting out the appropriate voltage and amperage, but the control panel that controls just the test does not work. The generator does work though if there's a power outage because we cut the power to the building and the generator kicked on as it should. So we're still covering that generator power if necessary. We just can't run tests. And so this will be to replace that test board on the current generator. And then we met with LWC for Coleman Roof and they are actually going to be out there next week or actually Friday, Friday the 22nd to put together a proposal for that roof repair or replacement. The HBAC at First Bank Expo, they're reporting that that will be done in two or three weeks. We did have a change order that commissioners approved today. When we first installed or when we first started this project, the placement of the cement pads that are on the west side of the building, they had to be moved from the place that was there on the original plans because there were gas lines underneath them. So they had to be moved about 20 or 30 feet both north and south. So that added extra duct work that had to be installed. But the change order was covered under the contingency money that you had already approved in the plan. Remember you approved the 5% contingency and this change order was $1,200. You had about $24,000 in that contingency and we anticipate this will probably be the last change order, but something just comes up that we're not expecting at all. And then the one ejector pump panel is complete. The other one will be scheduled to be started probably next week. And we're still waiting on a clarification on one of the third quotes that I have for the horse barn roof. And just as soon as I get that quote clarified, we'll be able to come and finalize that project to put that out for work. And then you'll note then, remember the two columns that we've added for the ARCA, you'll notice that there's been two projects that we paid ARCA funds from and that is the courthouse exterior and the HBAC and you'll see those balances have changed. Also note in the lower right hand corner, your current one-time fund balance shows about 2.4 million, but that does not, that still has the encumber amount. Your actual working balance that you should be paying attention to is the 1.2. Any questions?
Can you give a status report on the parking policy and implementation chart?
Parking policy, the, we have sent out the, we're sending out individual spreadsheets to each department because each department is a little bit different. And as they come back to me, then they are assigned their parking tags that will go back to them and as they receive their parking tags, then they'll start parking where they're supposed to. This building has been completed. We're starting on the courthouse, so next couple of weeks, everybody should have a parking tag. But I think you're already starting to see a difference in the parking pattern out here, even the course of the week.
All right. Thank you. I don't, I don't have a tremendous amount to add. I would say that the help process is moving forward and we will have a couple of agreements for you all to sign that the commissioners have already approved. The project implementation phase is going into effect. I'll tell you that East Germantown, who was the first with the creating places project for their, their playground and basketball court, have now met the $50,000 goal and have, have completed the process for match. They have, I think you'll tell, next Monday is still open and they're trying to raise a few more dollars. One of the things we have here is for East Germantown. And so the check, the $10,000 contribution from the county is, is waiting for approval here. They are holding kind of a little open house to celebrate having, having met their, their goal this Saturday at the East Germantown Town Hall from 1 to 3. So you're all invited to, to come out to that and to celebrate and we'll be presenting them with their, their checks. So again, implementation is moving forward. I think we're in pretty good shape. Steve and Beth are working on finalizing rules for the downtown redevelopment process. We have a million dollars committed from the county for that. We have about a million dollars committed for the process to afford funding for housing infrastructure in the county. We're finalizing the rules for developers to apply for that funding. And then working in tandem with Economic Development Corporation, there's about 800,000, 890,000 I think, in that range, available for light elimination. And Sarah Mitchell at the EDC is coordinating that process. She's already reached out to the towns that are involved in, in the Help program and offering them the opportunity to, to use some of this light remediation funding. Our own building grounds, our sort of building department and planning department are reaching out and have talked to some of the small towns to try to help them work through the unsafe building process. Some of them have never used that, but there will be the opportunity that the county or the EDC, either consolidated edit or county edit, will pay for removal of some unsafe buildings in these towns and within the city of Richmond and in a few cases, some of the, some of the county property unincorporated areas in the county. And then if there is a collection of those costs from the property owner, those monies would go back into that entity's unsafe building fund for the opportunity to use those dollars again. Reimbursement is somewhat problematic, otherwise the unsafe buildings would have already been removed. So we'll see how that goes. It's a good experiment. And again, we've had the opportunity to work with a lot of the small towns on some of these projects and I think we're building some relationships that we haven't had in the past. So I'm looking forward to, to continue with those, those discussions going forward. We are also working with the Wayne County Foundation. Spent two days at training from the Office of Community and Rural Affairs a couple of weeks ago on the application process for the new regional stellar program. And so the, the foundation is looking very seriously at being the lead applicant for any of the communities in Wayne County that are eligible and want to be a part of that process. It would be another planning process, very similar to what we went through with Help. Hopefully this will include some of the, some of the towns that were not a part of Help. There are only two communities that are excluded from, from participation and eligibility for community development block grants, those two being Cambridge City and Dublin. And the reason is that they received between the two of them, a million dollars through the Help program of community development block grants for their projects. Because those are open projects, they're not eligible to be, to receive funding through this process, this stellar process. But we do intend to invite them to participate in the planning process so we can, we can look at additional projects that they're, that might be interested in pursuing. So we'll be working on that. We actually have to turn in a letter of intent by May the 1st. And if we're successful, then the application process will go through November the 1st and then awards made around the end of the year. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have and we'll get to, to approve these programs for Milton, East Germantown and Conne over here.
Thank you for that. Any questions? All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the workshop minutes from February 1st.
Move.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have motion in the second for the discussion. If not, all in favor of approving the minutes from the last workshop, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right. Next up, we have Adam McQueen and Gina Glass here with us tonight. I'll let you explain what you need.
Thank you. Um, so I'll say thank you to the commissioners, county councils for adding us to the, giving us some of your time and here tonight and try to be respectful of that. Um, reason myself, this is Gina Glass, the director of community corrections for Wayne County, myself, engineer here tonight to request permission to apply for each of our respective grants. I'm going to let Gina talk a little bit about hers, but for my grant specifically, I write for the Justice Investment Advisory Council grant for probation. I've been writing that grant and been successful since 2015. So I'm hopeful to receive that grant again. I did want to point out, I know that you were provided some budgets, I think in advance for those grants. What those represent are what we've asked for or what we intend to ask for, but it doesn't necessarily represent what we would receive. And so assuming if, if we get approved to move forward today and ask for these terms, we will find out, we just July the 12th. One, if we've been successful with our applications and two, what amounts we've awarded. So I just wanted to definitely make sure to put that out there. Tonight, Gina, I kind of handed over her, she wants to talk a little bit about her grant, but I do know Wayne County has written formally successful in receiving community corrections grant dollars since 1986. Is that right?
Correct.
Um, Steve may have been a part of that. Got very first one, if I remember correctly. So very confident. Again, and Gina's word as well, but kind of hand it over to you if you have anything else.
Sure, thank you. I would just, and just to add to what Adam has already said, that this community corrections grant is the same grant from the Department of Corrections that funds the majority of our department. There's not really a cap as to the amount that we can ask for, it's just based on what we estimate. So again, especially with salaries, which is the biggest part of our grant from the Department of Correction is to cover our salaries in our department. The probation officer salary schedule doesn't come out until May or June, so it's hard to estimate what, what to, to put for our salaries. So that was the biggest guess. The, the rest of the grant that I asked for did not change from the, from prior years. So that, that was the only change I put in our grant. And as Adam said, you know, it's, if, we, we probably won't get what we asked for because we've been told that, from the Department of Corrections, we've been told that they are not likely to award additional money for 2025, but we can ask for it. So of course I'm going to ask for it, but, but it's, it's, we've been told it's not likely we will get additional funds.
And you did say earlier that it does not include the payroll for the, the crew supervisor.
That's correct. The Department of Correction Grant will not cover the work crew supervisor position and any fringe benefits that go along with that position. That comes out of project income, which is a user, the project income, which is a user, um, user, user fee fund. So that user fees are paid into that fund which pays the salary for that position. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any questions?
Also, once we've received the, the award letters, we would of course submit a budget that would align with, with, with what council has approved for salaries.
We also plan to go through all of that process, but it's early and you have to at least give an estimate of what we think it might take for next year.
Do you have anything you need us to sign?
Um.
Is that all you've got?
I think it's.
Okay. All right.
Do you need a motion? I will make the motion that we approve both of the grants since stated by Adam and Gina or presented by Adam and Gina.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Kathy, second by Gary. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got it. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for keeping us in the loop. All right. There's a transfer here tonight. From the campaign finance enforcement to the HAVA election security grant. This is from Debbie Berry. She needs to transfer, better get my glasses so I look at it all right. From Fund 11111, the campaign finance enforcement, $445.54. And she needs to transfer that to Fund 8104 account 33670. And that's the election security grant. What was the fund number that's coming from? The 11111, five ones? That's all she's got on here. Did she get, did she get happy with the ones?
I was going to say that is.
Yeah, this is.
Okay. All right. I'm looking at the actual paper that go out. Yeah.
What was that fund? Five binds from light, fire fees and stuff?
Campaign.
Yes.
I'll move like transfer.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none.
So Beth, that was 1111.
Yes.
Okay. I'm like, wait a minute. Wait, wait, 80, what was it? 80?
8104.
Account 33670. And now we need to open a public meeting so we can appropriate the bridge, the bridge account funds that were left over from the jail bond. So I'll open up the question to the public. Do you have a public to question?
I'll move and close the hearing. Second.
Motion in the second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So move. So we'll be.
So now the.
We need to, well, we need to appropriate, I need a motion to appropriate the $856,695.21.
I'd so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Now we get to transfer that money back where it should be from the end of the. We've got a transfer of $450,000 from 60016, $280,000 from 60026, and $126,695.21 from 60017.
I'll move like transfers.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Those are all within Bridge Fund 1135.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just backtrack what we did last.
Because they have an emergency and had to get that paid before we had time to have this meeting tonight, so with the proper advertising. And then, oh, that's the same thing. That's the very same thing. We have two of the same ones for everything here.
Okay. We're good. We're ready for the inter-local agreements with Milton and East Germantown and Economy. Do you have those?
I do.
Ron wasn't filling well and he left tonight.
Okay. Right, Brandon, was there anything else that, that you needed? You have anything?
Not necessarily. I was going to answer questions, but I didn't really have any.
You didn't even have to talk about it.
He's already jumped through a few hoops.
Thank you.
The trees that need to be removed before April that were, that led to the emergency meeting, is that's going forward?
Yes, they, they actually started all on the west side trees today and they're going to continue on tomorrow and start on the east side next week.
Okay.
Those will be that tree. Appreciate all your help on that.
Is that right?
Okay, so we have actually three sets of
Each one?
Of the inter-local agreements. First is with Milton. And the commissioners have already approved all of these. And again, these are based on projects that have been approved by the Help Strategic Investment Plan. And it looks like there's two copies then of each that require.
Only two.
Yes. So any, any questions on Milton? Projects are the new playground, sidewalk replacements and sewer upgrades.
Which area is up?
This is Milton.
I see a motion to approve his contract with Milton.
With, to approve the agreement.
Inter-local agreement.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none.
Next one is the inter-local agreement with Economy. And this is for, for two, two projects. One is playground, the other is remediation efforts for the gymnasium in Economy. This is an interesting project because the playground and, and the gym actually belong to the township. So the township and the town are working together to complete these projects and to replace the playground which currently has equipment from when the school in Economy closed in the 60s.
About 1945.
Is that right? Is that right? So, so they have.
Great job.
They have served their, their purpose well and are, are ready to be retired. So there are two copies of, of this as well.
I would like to make a motion to approve the project. I would second that.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Still move.
And then finally, we have East Germantown. And East Germantown has three projects. The playground is, is asking out clearly, some sidewalk replacements and some sewer upgrades, particularly for the control panels for the, for the sewers. And again, as I said earlier, they, they have raised in excess of $50,000, so they've met that goal and they'll, they'll have a $50,000 match from, yeah, housing, community development.
So do we have a motion?
Hello.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. So that's everything, right? Now, I have one more thing. Max has something from the committee for us.
Yes, uh, as typically we meet prior to the workshop every month. We talked, or I did announce last month that we'd be purchasing two cars for the sheriff's department if they're budgeted and replacement of van, the van has 70,000 plus miles on it that definitely needs to be replaced. We have everything, or quotes, prices ready to get those ordered. The commissary fund is going to pay for one of these cars as normal, so we need to pay for the car and the van. The van is slightly more than a car, so at some point. The van is slightly more than a car, so at some point, we may need to, that's an additional like what is all done. But our recommendation from the fleet committee is that for the one car and one van, a total of $105,537, that we pay that out of the ARPA funds as we get down several other capital projects. We bring that money later into the fund that can be used for special projects like previously. So rather than spend that out in general fund for those two vehicles, I have moved that we, from a council standpoint, throw, or spend $105,537 for those two vehicles.
$105,000.
Car was $58,006.85 and the van is $54,852. And the van is a full van that has to match what we had in the past to move the cage over into that. So that's all been taken care of. The extra air conditioning can be installed in that as well as what's required.
And again, Max, a part of your motion is that those funds that are in the general fund that we moved into the project fund that we've agreed would require council and commissioners to, to spend.
And understand that you folks need to act on the same repercussions.
Correct. Okay.
We have a force here.
I have a motion of previous, finding two vehicles from ARPA.
Do we have a second?
Second.
You guys haven't voted yet.
No, we haven't. We're all in favor. It's okay.
With all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
I just wanted to get you down. You have a lot.
Yeah, there you go.
I moved the motions.
You, you already made the motion. So do we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none.
So also from the fleet committee, the first online, they're trying the online option to dispose of vehicles. We actually have a truck posted now. It's been up there for bid. Aspired, I think, next week. But thus far, there's been over 50 bids on that. And it's, it's a truck with a lot of issues and problems. Like now, bid's 2,700, but we expect that to change in the next few days. Also, getting close finally to have the identification decals to build on all vehicles, which would be, other than a couple of departments, like the sheriff's department and the highway. They have called them and not to be the same logo and so forth. That's been in discussion for a long time. But they're finally, we're finally getting ready.
That's done. That's awesome. Anything else?
I think that covered.
So I think Max needs those right there.
Make sure Bob gives us those, will you?
So as you all know, we lost Councilmember Bob Chamnis last month. And once we're notified officially from the clerk, we have 30 days to hold a caucus to replace that position. And so there will be a caucus held on April 2nd. And our next meeting is April 3rd at 8:00 a.m. So we'll have a new memory in place at our next meeting. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. So.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.